You good?
Yes.
All right. We can see you.
What a weird experience.
I mean, when they took you out of the meeting, they really took you out of the meeting.
I was like, why'd you kick me out of the meeting for? I could listen. It's all good, though. You learned something new.
Okay, um, do we have our colleagues back?
I'm here.
Uh, thank you.
We're back on cable.
And we're good? We're live?
Yep.
Okay. We're reconvening, uh, back on conduct of business. We're going to move on to item B.
Item 6B, waive first reading and introduce amendments to San Bruno Municipal Code Title V: nuisances as part of a comprehensive municipal code update.
Okay, uh, city attorney, this is, comes back to us from last time when you were asking us for our input direction, and now you've brought back, uh, some of that all, uh, packaged up. So, city attorney.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you very much for your attention tonight. I know we have another item on the agenda, and I'll try to move through the presentation just as quickly as possible and highlight a couple of points of direction that we took from the city council at the last meeting and incorporated them into the ordinance that you have before you for considering introduction tonight. So, our agenda tonight is just a bit of background. Uh, we're going to discuss the, a couple of policy issues that came up last time and then briefly talk about next steps. So, you'll remember, uh, this background. Uh, you've seen it on a number of slides when we've, uh, brought back ordinance amendments to the various titles. We're on, uh, Title V, but the, the primary focus of our review of the entire municipal code is updating for internal consistency and current law. Um, and of course, an opportunity for any policy discussions that the city council wishes to have. And we have had those policy discussions, um, actually about each of the titles that we brought, uh, to the city council. So, that's a great opportunity for the council to, to weigh in as we go through the process. So, uh, we've had a, uh, a process that's lasted, uh, just, just a little over a year, uh, starting last October of 2018. And, um, we brought it forward with titles one and two that were adopted in, and then, uh, Title III in 2019 in July, and then Title IV in March of this year. And, uh, then on the 28th of April, uh, just about a month ago, you provided some policy direction regarding Title V, which is what we're on tonight. So, you'll remember that Title V has eight chapters, and I'm going to just display them up on the screen here for you, so you have them in mind. And so, we're proposing amendments to four of those chapters, and unfortunately, uh, my screen just changed and the PowerPoint is no longer displayed. Oh, there it goes again. All right, I think we're all set. So, we have some, uh, proposed amendments to the four chapters, and I see that my clicker is now no longer working, so I can't scroll through the, um, the slides. So, I'm sorry about that. We're going to take just a moment, uh, to see if, uh, we can, we can wait for just a minute to get that technical difficulty fixed. And we apologize for the delay. Oh, sorry, folks, the clicker is not working.
I can go ahead and share, Mark. I'll, I'll stop your share and I'll start sharing. If you could close out of here.
Okay, well, um... Okay, well, we seem to have it back up again. And, uh, Melissa, I'm not sure, uh, what you can do or which slide you can go to. Each of the, um, items is separately displayed, but if you just scroll through, uh, slide number seven, that's the one with, that we're currently on right now. Or, excuse me, slide number six. I apologize.
Okay, one second. Slide number six, okay.
That's correct.
I'm getting there. There's a lot of graphics.
That's all right. And, uh, since we set it up so that, um, I could control it and display each of the sections on, on my click, uh, maybe when the slide comes up, I'll just tell you to change the slide, and you could just display the entire slide at once. Is that okay?
Okay.
All right, sounds good.
Would you like me to just, display all these graphics now? Or I just wanted to type?
You bet. You put them all up there, that's right.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, we are proposing amendments tonight to four chapters, and, um, there's, uh, section 5.04.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
5.04.
There we go.
Great. 5.04, which is nuisances. And the main thing that we're doing tonight, based on the city council's direction, is to propose a couple of wording changes so that it's consistent with chapter 7.36. And 7.36 is something that, um, we, uh, saw after the last meeting or realized, uh, was there after the last meeting, uh, dealing with abandoned and inoperable vehicles. And that was a topic of conversation at the last meeting, and it was one of the main interests of the city council, uh, to address. So, we're going to talk about that in just a minute. There's a few other wording changes for internal consistency. And then finally, uh, we've adopted the staff and city council's suggestion to prohibit the feeding of wild animals if doing so is causing a public nuisance. And if you could go to slide number seven, that would be great. Thank you.
Do you know how many graphics are on here?
Yes, there are, uh, three, uh, below that.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. So, we have some proposed minor amendments to three of the sections that are displayed on the, um, screen, 5.08, 5.16, and 5.22, which is the next one after 5.16. There you go. And, uh, there were no comments, I don't believe, about those up at the, at the last meeting. All right, if you could go to slide eight, that would be great. And, uh, there are three main bullet points here, uh, that, uh, basically Title V has proven to be comprehensive and sufficient. And what we went over last time was the difficult code enforcement cases are usually not, uh, caused by inadequate ordinances. Um, there's a few common issues underlying code enforcement, and there's four sub-bullets under that, uh, Melissa, along with four sub-bullets under the last bullet. So, if you could just click that clicker eight times, I think you'll be right there. So, uh, we talked about this last time. I won't spend a lot of time on it, but it's the question of whether there's a public versus a private nuisance, whether the violations are transitory or difficult to confirm. And oftentimes, residents who have been engaging in, in whatever the behavior is that violates the code don't want to change. And often, that's the case regardless of whether there's a, a fine or a sanction imposed. They'll just ignore it, they won't pay it, they'll appeal it, they'll drag it out. And this has been the city's, um, uh, experience in some of the more difficult, uh, code enforcement cases. Sometimes their neighbor disputes, uh, sometimes circumstances outside of their control, sometimes there's a, a, a good reason in their mind why they would like to keep the, the nuisance condition on their property. So, Melissa, if you could go to slide number nine, that would be great. There's, there's two main bullet points, um, and there's two under the second point. So, uh, the last time, we requested staff input regarding any unaddressed public nuisance, and one of the things that came up was parking of inoperable vehicles on private property. So, as you know, the challenge with this, as we've talked about at, at many meetings, uh, both having to do with public and private property, is that the built environment really isn't adequate to accommodate the number and types of vehicles, whether they operate or not, that are owned and operated by residents. And, uh, this sort of problem really satisfies all of the criteria that you saw on your prior slide for a difficult, uh, code enforcement matter. And so, that's why they're, they're so intractable. So, if you could go to the next slide, Melissa, that would be great. And there's, uh, one main bullet, uh, with, uh, three sub-bullets and a couple of those under, under the last one. So, briefly, uh, we talked about this earlier in the meeting. I think, uh, the city manager brought it up, as did the police chief. And one more bullet after, uh, the purpose. Thank you. The, um, the city has, in fact, the city council adopted a number of strategies to, uh, limit overcrowding both on the street and on private property. So, we've had the residential permit parking program implemented after quite a number of months, if not years of study. Uh, we've had a, uh, periodic enforcement for violations, and you've heard the police chief mention those this evening. Uh, we've had adopted new zoning regulations to allow additional off-street parking, which is what the city manager alluded to in one of his earlier presentations. And the whole point of all of these coordinated strategies is to increase the amount of parking availability, both on public property and on private property. Nevertheless, parking of inoperable vehicles can still be an issue. And so, if you could go to slide 11, there's two main bullet points here. And, uh, if you, uh, click one more time and then another, uh, four times, you'll be all done with this one. So, the city council's direction at the last meeting was to focus on inoperable vehicles. And what your existing code in chapter seven says, that inoperable vehicles may only be parked in an enclosed building that's not visible from public or private property. Well, if you pause for a minute, you'll realize sort of how broad and all-encompassing that is. So, what that essentially means is that if you have an inoperable vehicle, it has to be parked in, in a garage, in essence, or some enclosed building that isn't, so that the vehicle itself isn't visible from either public property or from private property. So, uh, given the city council's direction at the last meeting, what we did is went through Title V and made a couple of amendments, so that Title V is now consistent with chapter 7.36. Well, what did we do? In a couple of places, we incorporated references to 7.36 at the suggestion of, I believe, I think it was council member Medina, but I, I'm sorry, I, if I've got that wrong, I can't recall, that the, um, we've clarified that a DMV certificate of non-operation is not a sufficient for parking an inoperable vehicle if it's visible, and will amend 7.36 at a later date. So, what this basically means is that just because you go to the DMV and get something that says, "My car is, is not operational," that doesn't mean it's an operational vehicle under, under city codes. Uh, it's still an inoperable vehicle, and you still can't park it except in an enclosed building. Uh, we made some minor changes to conform in a couple of sections so that all the vehicle types are matched up. Um, and then finally, uh, one of the, uh, suggestions was to, it was sort of, uh, unclear, uh, how long camper shelves could be on property, and it's currently says reasonable time, and I agree that was unclear. So, we've changed that to 72 hours to be consistent, uh, with the normal 72-hour rule of parking on, uh, public property. So, those are in essence the changes that we proposed to address the city council's direction and for consistency to, uh, chapter 7.36. So, if you could go to slide number 12, and we have two main bullet points here with two sub-bullets under the second one. So, these amendments, uh, we think do make it consistent with 7.36, but just because you amend the code and make it consistent doesn't mean it's going to solve the problem. And so, there'll be additional discussion with the city council at a number of future meetings, uh, having to do with future efficiencies proposed for implementation of an inoperable vehicle abatement program. And just to let everybody know, in case it, it wasn't clear to begin with, this is a difficult, intractable problem and often requires a substantial amount of effort and resources, uh, by cities up and down the peninsula and frankly, all over the state to abate non-operable vehicles. And that is especially the case, uh, when they're being abated from private property where their due process rights are, uh, more robust than they are, uh, with respect to removal on public property. If you could go to slide 13, that would be fantastic, and we have one main bullet point for parking with just two sub-bullets. So, we are not changing, and there's just three under tarps. We'll get to that in a minute. At the city council's direction, we are not changing the number of allowed operable parked boats, trailers, campers, or RV. Our code says one, and the consensus, I think, was to leave it at one. So, if they're operable, you can park one of those on the property. And then finally, relating to parking, there was a discussion about tarps, and I confess that I didn't get a clear direction, I don't think, from really even a majority of the city council, uh, to cover or not to cover. And, uh, I think there's probably differing views on what's less attractive, the tarp or what's under them. And so, uh, there's no amendments proposed at this time. If the city council decides this, this is a, a problem we need to address, we can certainly do so in connection with an implementation program coming down the road, uh, to abate inoperable vehicles on private property. So, we, we don't have any suggestions about, about tarps at this time. I think the, uh, dealing with the inoperable vehicles is, uh, going to, going to be plenty for staff to deal with. If you could, uh, flip quickly to slide 14, and we're almost done. The other, uh, unaddressed public nuisance conditions, uh, there's one more after this, would be to prohibit feeding wild animals if causing a public nuisance. Uh, the reason why we worded it this way is to avoid the problem of, of which animals or some animals and not other animals or, uh, other sorts of complexities that actually would make it difficult to enforce. If there's a public nuisance, uh, we know what that's defined as, then there's a complaint staff can enforce. And then there's minor wording amendments throughout, uh, the code. So, the final slide is number 15 with just, uh, four bullets, and that is to introduce the ordinance tonight. After you've reviewed the amendments, we can schedule adoption for the very next meeting, and we still remain on track, um, hopefully, uh, to complete all of the chapters, uh, by, uh, hopefully by the end of next year, if not sooner. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank the attorney. Uh, questions from colleagues? Laura.
Trying to raise my hand. Um, so yeah, so, Mark, you're correct. I think we, I don't think we were really clear on tarps or no tarps, so I think, um, there is really no right answer. I will say that, you know, I think your words are excellent in that you, you know, it's not the code enforcement, it's, it's not the, um, the wording that we need to change, that there really is good, uh, it really is a good ordinance, it's really trying to enforce this. Um, I, I found it to be very interesting, um, how many vehicles are not registered, are not currently registered? Um, and, and some go back to 2012, 2009, that are parked on driveways. And, you know, when you start doing a lot of walking, you, uh, in a very short amount of time, you get into double digits. And I think that a lot of those vehicles are parked on driveways, and I think that those driveways take up parking that a vehicle that's on the street can be parked in. So, um, I, I like the changes that you're requesting, and I think you did a, a great job, uh, capturing our comments. And I just think we just need to try to enforce, force it, enforce them.
Linda.
Yeah, I just, um, wanna refer to, um, it's page 142 to 143, and this is, um, it's issuance of administrative citations. So, I, I spoke with Mark earlier about this. I just, um, I want to make sure we mention it, that it's, uh, right now, it states when all the following are true. It actually requires the city to truly be the enforcement officer between a landlord and a tenant, um, because it requires that the tenant has to be in possession of the property, um, that there be a rental agreement that provides, that the rental or lease agreement prohibits the cultivation of the cannabis, and then that the rental property owner or agent did not know the tenant was illegally cultivating cannabis and no complaint, et cetera, or information caused the rental property owner or agent to have actual notice of the illegal cannabis cultivation. So, for anybody who's watching this recording, it's on page 142 to 143 of the, of the packet. Um, the issue here that I wanted to just raise is that it really places the city, um, in an awkward position because the state law does allow, I believe it's six cannabis plants, and, um, the city then is, is to kind of step in and enforce a contract between the landlord and the tenant. So, my recommendation, um, or my suggestion would be to add somewhere in here, um, some language that says, you know, that does not adhere to the state law, um, because otherwise, the city's gonna be, have to use its own resources and, and we're already at capacity to try to really enforce a lease that's between a landlord and a tenant, um, and maybe adhering to the state laws. So, I, I don't know, um, I know Mark and I spoke about this earlier, and Mark, I don't know if you have any comments on that, but that would be, um, my suggestion and recommendation to make it really easier on you, uh, in the long term, in the long run.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Mason. I thank you for, for noting that and, uh, noting it in, in the version of the ordinance, and I, I do think it's a good suggestion. We can easily insert something here that, that says, um, you know, in violation of, of, of state law, whatever it may be, uh, that's not what it'll say, but we'll add some words in there that make it clear that the, the staff is, is not to be enforcing when the tenant is cultivating in a way that is consistent with state law.
Right, and, and also that, that's, yes, and also that we're not gonna get between, uh, you know, if there's a violation of the lease, um, there are eviction proceedings for that, right? Or that's a landlord's.
Right, that's right. And normally, the, the code enforcement would not get involved in, in those matters, so you're right.
Okay, great, thank you.
Marty.
Just a second, okay. So, my question is about the in-ops and tarps, right? So, let's say you have an in-op on your, on a property, it gets reported, the property owner throws the tarp on top of it, and then what happens? Um, let's say that tarp is on that car for a long time, and, and with the sun, it, it starts getting tattered and it's blowing around like something out of The Walking Dead, and, um, it's just really unsightly. So, I think, we, if we're gonna go ahead and do this one time, I think we should, we should tighten that up a little bit. And, um, I'm interested, interested in hearing, um, how it would be enforced if somebody is through a tarp, a tarp on an in-op.
So, Councilmember Medina, if, if I may, through the, through the chair, are you asking, how is it enforced now, or how could it be enforced if we changed or amended the ordinance in some way?
Right, so, so now, you, if, if it's an in-op, you can see the registration, as long as you're on the path of, uh, getting to the home, like a postal carrier, you could, you could look at and see that it's not registered, right? So, what would stop somebody from throwing a tarp on that vehicle and then say, you know, "Leave me alone, it's tarped, I don't want you to bother me, um, I have a right to my privacy"?
So, so I think that probably the best way for me to answer that question, uh, Councilmember Medina, is, is twofold. First of all, to indicate that, um, that's, that's a detail that I think we will need to work out, uh, when, if and when an inoperable vehicle abatement program comes to the city council, and I think the city manager has previously alluded to the fact that there may be other code amendments that might be required once, uh, you know, once the city council authorizes that, that program. I think right now, we probably don't know enough, um, about that issue to, to determine exactly what to do about it. The other, uh, problem with that is, or the other issue that I think comes up with that is to determine what is the problem that we're trying to solve. And I, I think the best way to put that is we're trying to eliminate what appear to be nuisance conditions on private property, dilapidated materials, structures, junk, those, those sorts of things that, that make the property appear dilapidated. So, you, that goal is not accomplished necessarily by having an ordinance saying, "There's no tarps on vehicles," because you could put a nice tarp on a vehicle and a nice car cover, and it, it looks good. It may look good for a long time. So, then what do you do? Uh, you say, "Well, you, you can have a, a tarp or a cover, but not only when it's not dilapidated." So, uh, and that word dilapidated is used in, in the nuisance ordinance, so there is some precedent for that. But it, it's much more difficult to enforce and to determine what, what exactly that means. A good example of that, actually, that came up in a property situation, was an awning, uh, that, that was present in a, what staff believed was a dilapidated condition in a visible location on El Camino Real. So, it wasn't a car, but it was an awning. And it took, uh, months, if not a year, along with conversations with the, a property owner's attorney to have them, um, make that awning not look dilapidated anymore. So, uh, just, just on, on one property, it was very, very difficult to enforce that. So, I think that's something that we can look at when we look at enforcement of inoperable vehicles in general.
No, and, and that, that is fine. Thank you for that explanation. I just recall that, um, some of the tricks of, uh, when I worked here as a code enforcement officer, that people could use to, um, circumvent the intent. So, I, I look forward to that, uh, in-op, um, the future program to deal with it, because the more in-ops that are off this, out of driveways, the more parking spaces that are available to that property owner and to the community from having those vehicles, uh, removed. So, uh, thank you.
If I may, through the chair?
Yes, city manager.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, um, that there are no current plans to generate a inoperable vehicle enforcement campaign. Uh, what the, uh, city attorney was referring to is within the, uh, proposed budget, we, uh, we do have code enforcement moving to the police department, uh, and I have tasked the police department with doing a thorough look, um, with the tools that are available to enhance our enforcement, um, and that may require subsequent changes to Title V or Title VII. Uh, but specific to a campaign for inoperable vehicles or abandoned vehicles, that, that is not currently, um, um, on, on staff's work plan, but in, a, a general, uh, direction to increase the effectiveness of our code enforcement, um, is. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Javon, for that clarification, and I apologize if anything I said suggested, uh, that you would immediately be seeing a, a program to remove inoperable vehicles from private property. That was, that was not my intention.
Michael.
Uh, thank you. And so, I just wanted to say that a lot of what we're discussing really starts, uh, getting dangerously close to just being an infringement on people's right to do, basically, to do what they want to do with their property. And, um, you know, you, you could start with tarps and saying, you know, "Your tarp is too ugly," and then all of a sudden saying, "I don't like the color of your house," and, uh, the, the flag that you're flying in front of your house is too tattered, it's too faded, I don't like it, so you, you have to change it. So, I mean, I don't know where it stops from there. And, um, and really, like, like, um, uh, the city attorney said, you know, it's, it comes back to what problem we're trying to solve. And if getting rid of tarps, we think is gonna create more parking spots, I, I would debate that and say, "I, I don't see that happening." I think you can even force people to get things out of their driveway, and they're still gonna park in front of their house because they like having the parking spot in front of their house reserved for them. And, um, I, I just, I just don't see that this is really the solution to the problem that we're trying to solve. But with that, I, I do agree that we do need to give our staff tools that they need to do their jobs, and, uh, some of the, the revamping of this does allow them at least to have that, something to fall back on and, and to help the community where there are complaints. I, I know a lot of this is still gonna be complaint-driven, and so, um, hopefully, we do focus on areas that are indeed a blight. So, not talking about the, the one abandoned car or the one inoperable car, but, you know, hopefully, places where we, we've seen two, three, up to 10 cars on, on a lot abandoned and, um, dilapidated, and those, those are the areas that we do want to clean up. And those are the areas that we do want to clean up. And so, this is a step in the right direction. The one area that kind of jumped out at me that I think I would like modified was in regards to, it's 5.04.030, public nuisance conditions. And I noticed that in section F or part F of that, motorcycles were added to items that would, you could only have one of, even in a garage or in a driveway, you can only have one motorcycle. And I just don't think that motorcycles should be lumped in with boats and trailers and campers. They're small items, they're generally used for personal transportation, and so, I don't think that they should be thrown into that category.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, the attorney.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Salazar, for that suggestion. So, I picked that up in my review because motorcycles is listed in another section, and we thought, okay, well, they should all be consistent. I think the intent of this is to say that if, you're right, you can have one boat, you know, one trailer, camper, whatever, RV or motorcycle. And certainly, you could take motorcycles out of this and not affect the rest of the code. I only added it in for consistency, but it's up to the city council if they'd like to remove it.
All right, yeah, so that would be my request. I mean, I'm okay with everything else, but I think that is, I mean, I know a lot of people here in town that have two motorcycles. And basically, this says, you can no longer have two motorcycles. I have two motorcycles.
I didn't know you had two, okay. Let's see, I don't, I'm not seeing any persons from the audience, the public, with their hands up. So, with that said, we'll go back, is there any, Marty, I'm sorry, you had your hand up.
I agree with Councilman Salazar. I think motorcycles are absolutely fine. To limit it to one would be unreasonable. If I could have two motorcycles, I would. So, I think we should keep that out of there. Thank you.
I would concur on the motorcycle as well. Out of this thus far, we've had in regards to motorcycle and then also adding or inserting language of not enforcing between landlord and tenant on the cannabis that Linda had discussed. So, that's what's before us. This is item B, which is, there is a, the city attorney, correct me, but we need to waive the first reading?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And then, as far as making any of those changes, whether motorcycles and/or cannabis, would that be in the introduction of the amendments, where you'd like that placed?
That's correct. So, once you waive the first reading, then when you make the motion to introduce, just, you know, indicate that both of those amendments will be included and brought back for adoption.
Understood. All right, let's go, is there any action regarding waiving the first reading? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we waive the first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made a second to waive the first reading. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And now, there's action for introducing the amendments, and if somebody wants to, chooses to include one or both of the other items. Don't all speak at once.
Okay. I move that we bring forward the amendments to the ordinance with the changes to the motorcycle piece and the cannabis piece that was raised by Councilmember Mason.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, city attorney.
Thank you.